So, good?
Yeah, thanks.
So, let's get started. I'll call the meeting to order. It's 7:05. We'll let the minutes reflect that the board, all the board members are here and we have a number of members of our staff and some audience, the brave audience that has braved the weather. We have the November 12th minutes before us and I would entertain a motion of approval for those minutes.
I'll move to approve the November 12th minutes.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, questions, comments, updates, changes, et cetera? Okay, then the minutes will stand approved as written. Thank you, Lisa, as always, for that. We have no public hearings this evening. We do, we do have a guest that was slated to be here and I'm just going to assume, because we haven't heard otherwise, that the person is N. Ruth. So, we'll come back to that individual. It's for a dental lab at 1782 Penfield Road. And we'll move on to our action items. And our first action item under law and finance is 1223 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. And Mr. Costello, I'd ask that you just kick that off for us.
Thank you, Tony. Recently, we had a discussion with Rudy Neufeld and Peter Vars regarding the potential for 24 townhouses at 6.7 acres that Rudy had purchased on the north side of, I'm sorry, on the west side of the Five Mile Point, Nine Mile Point Road, just immediately north of the Abington Place subdivision. He showed 24 units, 24 townhouse units. By code, he's entitled to have three units based on the fact that he has 6.7 acres. He was intending to use incentive zoning as a function of trying to get these 24 units on site. The property is an infill. There are single-family detached houses on three sides of the property, with 250 being on the east side of the property. He was invited to come tonight, but I did not see him here. Some of the features that you might want to think about as part of this process is that if this were a townhouse project, a townhouse development within a zoning district of townhouse dwelling, he would be required to have an 80-foot setback from all portions of the structures on the property. He doesn't have that, I don't think, on any of them. Some of the things that we were concerned about a little bit is the fact that at the end of the drive that he has, he shows a T-turnaround for emergency access. And certainly, if you had two or three fire trucks back there, for them to be able to turn around and back out and do what they had to do would be kind of a, you know, just unsafe situation for everybody involved. So, the thinking would be that he would probably have to lose a couple of lots, develop a cul-de-sac type design or something to get trucks in and around and get them out safely. There are single-family homes. I think he's got a 10-foot setback on the easterly, I'm sorry, on the westerly portion of the property, budding, single-family detached homes. There are some buffers between the properties. There's some woodlots between the properties, but there would probably have to be more buffering than what's out there today. That was just a general overview of the project.
And so, a couple of additional notes that I made when he was in. A question was asked as it related to a capacity of sewers that has been an item because the sanitary sewage for this does go into Webster. And there is capacity for Abington, 100% capacity at Abington. And the comment that was made that, based on some work that will be done in 2015 by another developer in Webster, that will open up that availability of additional sanitary sewers in that area. And the only other comment that I would make is, you know, we talked about, talked about the retention facilities here out front and that they would be part of an HOA and not part of a dedicated or always dedicated property to Penfield. So, I think that kind of summarizes at least the additional notes that you may not have hit on, Jim.
And one last comment is if you look at the norly portion of the project, as it relates to the southern portion of the houses to the north, you have in some cases where there are three or three and a half units to each property. Particularly, if you look at the situation here, this is somebody's backyard. There's a house here and there's one, two, three and a half units in their backyard alone. So, you've got that, that situation pervasive along the project.
Come sit up here, Rudy. We're here, we're talking about you.
While we're talking about your project, we weren't talking about you. I want to make sure that the record, the record is straight.
Jim, what is a current zone, R2?
R2.
And so, under current zoning, it would, three, three units?
Three, single-family detached.
And then, Abington, what was that zone prior to incentive zoning?
It was a combination of R1 and R2, I believe.
That's correct.
Okay. So, the total number of units that were, that could be developed under conventional zoning?
For Abington?
Yes.
I believe it was around 67 or something like that.
It was 22 and, or 24 and we, then the incentive kicked in after, I want to say 2...
No, I think, I think you were not asking for that many more units compared to what you were entitled to.
It was one acre.
It was one or two acres. I thought you were entitled to about 67 units and we ended up with 99 units.
If I'm going by memory, I thought, well, the incentive was 350,000, so divide that by 3,500 bucks. I don't, I can certainly find out. I can't remember.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to know, I'd like to know what, what difference was, what conventional zoning would have yielded and then what, what the incentive was.
I think they got, I think you got a third more than what you were entitled to.
No, I know exactly what it was after, because Harold called and it was 20, 22, after 23 houses, then we started paying the permit, the whole package.
Okay, so, so 99 units?
99 and 20.
Minus 23.
So, I thought it was 73 that we paid on.
All right.
Yeah, so it was about...
That's quite a bit more.
So, what we're saying is conventional zoning was 24?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think, and I think we should verify that.
Absolutely.
So that we're not, we're not trying to go on, you know, just all of our, all of our best, best estimates or best guesses. I think we, I think we just need to make sure that we've got that just, you know, from a reference standpoint.
Tony, can I just, can, can you take the...
Absolutely.
Yeah, I know we've talked about this in the past when it was first presented to us. And I do have some concerns about this particular project. I think that the setbacks that you were talking about here, Jim, that does concern me, that it's not within what we normally would establish for setbacks.
For townhouses.
For townhouses, thank you. And I'm just kind of, you know, concerned that this is, it's just, this is too busy in through here. It's too much in a tight, you know, geographical, you know, area. And so, I'm not really leaning towards supporting this project at this point, just because I think it's just kind of fitting too much in to a tight spot, particularly with the setbacks, you know, and respecting what these residents on both sides, you know, would end up seeing in their backyards at some point.
If you were to look at the project down on Five Mile Line Road that he did, the setbacks are pretty much the same as that. So, it would be, I mean, if you were to look at that and see...
No, they were much less there. They were only 20 feet, 20 and 30. This is 60. This is two, over two and a half times that. Because we can even...
From the rear of the building to the property line, is 60 feet?
I don't have the scale yet. It was about 65 feet. The 30 feet is wood. It's really a nice, it was his nursery, so it's really nice vegetation. And that, we don't plan to touch. I mean, that's going to be good for us, good for the neighbors. And when I developed the other one to the north, we left a 20-foot conservation easement there.
Let me just check the scale bar. Scale bar is right by your finger.
Was it 1?
Right here, cuz.
Right above your...
Right.
No, right here, cuz.
Scale bar.
Was it 50 scale? I can't remember what he drew there.
He is at 50 scale. Yeah?
I think it was like 50 or 60.
It's even more, it's almost 70.
So, it's 65 to 70 feet, Jim, is the...
Yeah, he's showing about 70 feet.
What's typical townhouse requirement? So, it's pretty close? In the 30, I want to do a conservation easement, so, I mean, it'd be a HOA, which they have to do what we tell them anyway, but I just have a little more strength.
Before you got here, I think, it's nice that you were as close to 80 as I, I didn't think you were that close, but some of the things we're looking at is the westley portion down here.
Yeah.
You've got the T-turnaround. If you get two or three fire trucks in here or an ambulance or something, it's not going to be easy for them to be able to get out without backing. One of the thoughts would be possibly to look at the possibility of doing a cul-de-sac or something to get, get them out safely so that you're not...
Or triple the turnaround or something?
Well, triple the turnaround, because you've still got somebody in here that got to get out. You've still got two or three fire trucks or whatever the case may be. They're going to have to all back out, so...
I don't think you've got enough swing radius, but making a double T would probably be most effective. You know, they can go this...
It would certainly help.
Then they can park four of them if they wanted to. I don't think there's enough room to turn a truck, but certainly to do a double backup would...
Do a hammerhead.
Yeah, that would probably be, plus it would give my residents party parking, too.
True.
So, that would, that would work fine for me.
No, it's a good point. And we have on townhouse projects required areas for visitor parking if you have a party or something.
We did three at the Village Square, which, you know, it's not full yet, but when it is, and I have two family members and somebody else does, so here, having five or six, I don't think would be bad at all.
Have you ever thought of having, you know, I know, like, certain places, they have their own square, they have their own party house, like Wings or Square, Concrete Square, whatever else.
This isn't really big enough to support that because then the HOA fees for, for whatever number of people you get would be like 1,000 bucks a month to try to pay for the party. You need 100, the rule of thumb is you need 100 residents to pay for a party house and have it still be a reasonable monthly fee. Otherwise, it just kills the few people.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I think when this was first brought to our attention, maybe a month ago for quick, just a quick input, I remember mentioning something along the lines of buffering at the west end, just to ensure that there are no traffic lights of any kind, immediately, you know, directing right into someone's back living room or anything along those lines, as well as, you know, maybe some buffer there, some noise mitigation of some sort. I'd be very interested in confirming the numbers for Abington as far as conventional zoning and then incentive zoning, because from, from where I am right now, I'm in favor of increased density for this area. I think that's consistent with the area and I think it's consistent with the comp plan. However, I think 24 may be too much at this point. So, what I'd like to see is what the Abington's ratio was. I mean, just quick math, was about four times, based on what we discussed here. And if that's the case, then maybe a dozen would be more appropriate for this parcel of land, but, you know, without knowing those numbers definitively, I don't want to, you know, make any concrete decisions tonight. But I just would like to have that as sort of some context for me.
So, we can, we can ask Mr. Costello to, you know, pull that, pull that information together so that, that we've got that, because we know, we know to the, to the north, it's R1, R120, if memory serves me correct, into that area. And then, obviously, to the south is Abington and what the dense, what the density is with that. So, we can, we can certainly take, take a look at that and get those numbers. And I, I too, you know, based on some discussion both from Mr. Costello and Mr. Neufeld, that having, having, you know, some better arrangement here, whether that's a hammerhead in that area, I think that, that certainly provides a little bit, a little bit better situation for emergency vehicles, ambulances, but especially fire trucks, that if they come down here, that we're not backing them the full length, potentially back out onto, you know, 250. So, doing, doing something, you know, in that area and what that, that will do is potentially impact, you know, a couple, a couple of units by doing that. But let's take a look at, let's take a look at that information, Jim, if you would. I think that would, that would be good. And then, and then when, when Cranberry was built, was, was there any incentive on the Cranberry side?
There, it was a little different then. It was so long ago that was one acre and we went to half.
Right.
And what we did, we were going to do a little park because there was 100 units there, so we said, well, we're going to leave two lots out and just make a green space for the whole community. But then the whole liability thing came up, so at that point, the board said, well, instead of doing that, just give us the value of two lots. And I believe at that point, it was like, I don't remember the exact number, but whatever the value then was like 75,000.
So, Jim, if you wouldn't mind checking that as well.
I think it was 75,000.
I think there's a few, a few of us that may not have been on the board at that time.
That was a good goal, yeah.
And I think it would be just good by, you know, by way of a little bit of historic data, if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah.
Doing that as well, so, okay. So, let's, let's get the data, let's get the information. Let's take a look at what this might look like with some improved turnaround capabilities here at that west, at that west end. And then, let's see what that, you know, what that does. That'll, that'll provide that, that ratio information, Rob, that I think you're looking for.
Right.
Okay. Yes, sir?
One quick comment, like on the T-turnaround, obviously, we'll lose a unit or two, but that will give me a little more space for the buffering. Plus, what we did over at Five Mile, there was a little, there was a single T-turnaround and then it was about a 40 by 60 spot that was just open. And we left, that's going to be green space for the community and we're going to do a little community flower garden and a vegetable garden.
Right.
Folks are loving it. So, you don't have to do anything, but if you want to go out and plant a tomato or do, you can't do it in the ground. So, that would afford us opportunity for really two little green spaces on each end for, for both sides. So, I, I think that would be good.
Okay.
Have you had any discussions with the neighbors around the property, what your time is?
I didn't do anything because we talked to you guys basically informally and after this point, if we say, boy, let's...
Just want to see where they're going with it.
I would be ready to do that as soon as we say it's, I don't want to do it all and then, you know, something the board doesn't like.
I think, you know, still, I think that's still premature. I think, you know, we, you know, I think this board, you know, wants to, you know, vet this out a little bit more and make sure that, you know, it's, it's fitting with the character of the area. I think Rob kind of hit the nail on the head as he talked about, you know, the, the general character of the area, kind of what the master plan had called for and, you know, making sure that, that, that kind of fits within that, that overall flow there. So, we'll gather that information. We'll, you know, come back and take a look at that. I, you know, I've said this before, I'll say it again. I'm not, I'm not looking for, and I don't think this board is either, I'm not, I'm not looking for, every time, you know, disrespect to BME, but every time they, they touch pen to paper, you know, the dollars roll. So, I think, I think, you know, a modified sketch of this, of that layout, so that, again, this is a sketch plan review. We're still working through the details and the numbers. And then, at some point, when the board is comfortable with what that ultimately looks like, and obviously, that next step. But I don't want, I don't want those dollars spent, you know, until we've worked through some of that detail, because again, I know that it is, it is costly and I'm very sensitive to that for, you know, any applicant that becomes before this board.
If it helps the board, if I'm hearing right, T-turnaround, a little green space, that, Peter's pretty reasonable with us and working with you folks here in Penfield. So, I could do a pretty simple sketch like this with those revisions and throw it in Jim's desk and it'd be here, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, before you do that, though, I think, I think Bob's concerns have to be addressed. And I think what I need to do is get the density calculations for those two projects. Get it to the board, get it to you. And I think what you're saying basically is, well, at least as one board member, you would support the same ratio of density.
Right, I'm meaning, I would lean more towards the same ratio.
Consistent.
Correct. So, if it's 12, if it's 13, 11, whatever it may be, I'd be more willing to look at that. So, before you, again, as Supervisor mentioned, before you kind of go back to BME, maybe you would go back and ask for a 12 to 14.
Is the board, all the board feel that way in terms of the...
Yeah, I don't, I'm not going to...
I'm not there yet, but it's good information to have before we...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not prepared to say, you know, the number is 12 or the number is 15 or the number. I think, I think we want to see what that, I think we want to see that ratio, because I think the key is, is, you know, from a consistency standpoint, overall.
Very good.
I think some of Peter's thinking, too, he took basically what, what happened at Five Mile, as far as density and how, I think it's pretty much a duplicate of the acreage and the units that we put there. And I think that was part of his thinking, too. I think he looked at it and the size of the units is pretty much the same square footage per unit as Abington, it's just a little more units. But I think he looked, he looked at Five Mile with some of this, too, so, okay, I'll stand by that.
And I think the only thing, excuse me, I think the only thing I would say is, is that as I, as I look at this area and I look at, at the Five Mile Line Road site, you know, I, I think we're looking at apples and oranges.
Right.
You know, based on, based on the area, based on the character of the area, based on the density of the area and then based on what else is in, in that area. So, you know, the one and Five Mile Line Road, you've got a, you've got a proprietary home, I guess I'll, I'll call it slash nursing home. You got a, you got a high school, you know, to the rear and then you've got a, you know, you've got a, a small number of, of residential units, you know, on a, on a busy road. So, that, that's a little bit, I think that's a little bit different than this site. And so, while I think having Peter pull some of that information forward, I think is good, but it may not be 100% apples to apples. So, but let's take a look at, let's take a look at the information. Let's make sure that we're being consistent as how we're looking at this and that we'll make sure that we're, you know, comfortable as we, you know, take a look at what, what this looks like as we move forward.
Beautiful. And I'll let Christie pull her data, too, to try to save you a little time, Jim, because we have all the stuff, too, if you need it.
Yeah, I think just checking, see what they've got.
Yep, I'll have her whip it over tomorrow. I'll be a newer, but what she can get together, I'll have her get together.
Very good.
All right, well, I'll wait then. Thank you very much, board.
Good, thank you.
Drive careful, everybody.
Yep, you do, you do the same.
All right.
The roads are, the roads are good in Penfield.
I'm sure it does.
Roads are good in Penfield. Okay, so, we'll move on to our next item and I'm going to ask Rick Grillo.
Yep.
Okay, Rick, please come forward. I know that we were cutting folks a little bit of slack here because of the, of the weather and so, you were, you were our identified guest on the agenda. And so, Jim, maybe between you and Rick, you'll give us kind of a little snapshot.
Thank you, Tony. I actually have not personally met Rick. We've been corresponding via email for the last several days. I did ask, I did talk to him. He indicated that he is interested in leasing the, the property at, leasing or purchasing, actually.
For now, just leasing.
Leasing the property at 1782 Penfield Road, which is the building behind Salonenzup. He would like to put in a dental lab on the site. That's, that would be a permitted activity based on your approval. The question at hand was, he, he asked me whether he needed to go through a full-blown public hearing process or whether he could do a streamlined process, subject to the type of business that he has and the intensity of scope. So, with that, I'll let you talk a little bit about your business and what you anticipate having operate, operationally on the site.
And, and before you do that, on my agenda, I've got Rick and on the email is Ricky, so what's...
It is Ricky.
It's Ricky, so that's the preference, okay. So, Ricky, please.
That's my legal name. That's, that's not a nickname or some sort, that's actually my legal name.
Okay, got it. Okay, so, yeah, I'm, I'm interested in opening up a digital dental laboratory.
What I would be fabricating is via tabletop milling machines or 3D printers. I would be manufacturing crown bridges, dentures for national customers that I have contact to. I've been doing this for 30 years, actually, now, and my anticipation would be I would, upstairs, it has a nice, big, open area to provide some educational space for doctors coming in or even for local doctors that would be interested in earning some CE credits. That would be upstairs. Then downstairs would be, so to speak, the area for placing these tabletop machines and office, storage room, the garage that is attached to it. Would be approximately four or five employees that are certified dental technicians. Does really know any big deliveries going on. This would be normal hours. This, maybe a daily UPS truck would be probably the maximum of deliveries. It's a very quiet, quaint business, so to speak. It's really not much going on besides us sitting in there and operating CAT CAM softwares that would manufacture and fabricate an output and that would be then wirelessly transferred to these printers and tabletop milling machines. That's pretty much in a nutshell. I've been doing this for, for a long time. I'm originally from Germany. I have my master's degree and PhD in dental science and technology out of Germany. So, I know what I'm doing and that's why I'm bringing it up.
Would you need to do any internal or external improvements to the building to, to house the equipment?
There's one power line that I would like to turn into a 220 line. That's, that's about it.
What, what drew you to this particular location?
It's close to my home. It's, yeah, it was just, it was price-wise, it was, it was very affordable and I like to have no neighbors around, there's some parking around. I don't need any type of storefront. I looked at several locations and Mr., I'm not sure if I say his name right, Mike Buena Corso, I think is the, is the owner, the option of potentially buying it and the way I interacted with him, it seemed to be a good relationship, business relationship, to, yeah, go forward. And the space looked great, was a great layout, was somewhat open, light-wise for a dental laboratory, it's important to get some lighting in there. So, it's not, the stuff, because it's tough to find around here, I noticed and...
Are you thinking Monday through Friday?
Yeah, so...
Have you done this before in Rochester area?
Opened up in laboratory? Yes. I had a laboratory in Perrington in the year 2003 to 2007 or so. And then I came together with a customer of mine and created a different type of business and I left that behind and closed it up. And that's pretty much what I'm re-engaging into, those customers that I had back in the day. And I attend a lot of trade shows and educational courses, so I have a lot of contacts and I do a lot of networking and I was just at this point where I probably should take advantage of my, my network that I created.
What would you envision the signage to be?
I haven't really thought about it. I don't really need a sign. I don't, I don't need anybody to draw to the building. Actually, maybe like a sticker on the window or maybe...
Dental lab or...
So, you're waiting for anybody coming or going, I mean, they just have customers.
Yeah, I don't have local customers. I mean, I know there's a couple of dentists around that might be interested in, in the CE credit maybe, but it's not that I need to advertise on, on site for any matter. It's, it doesn't have any, it doesn't have any value for me.
So, so basically, what would happen, orders, orders would essentially come in, you know, via the computer electronically would, would come in. They, they provide the, the detail, the design, what have you, and then you would make, so I, I'm probably not going to use the right terminology, but you essentially manufacture the crown or dentures or, or, or other pieces based on the specifications that you got, you know, from, you know, a dentist or, you know, some other, you know, orthodontist or, or, you know, someone like that.
That's mostly correct, yes. I mean, it's, I also would work for other dental laboratories that need design services because me and my technicians, we have niche skill sets that not everybody laboratory would be able to provide. So, even for those laboratories that have customers that would want to offer this product, they would come to us and ask us, okay, here's, here are the files, can you design this for me and send it back to me? Like, via file transfer.
Sure, sure.
How many other, how many employees?
I mean, more than five, wouldn't be really fitting in there. Maybe, it depends how many computers, so I haven't really made a layout, but it's five, five, six tops.
And then, you talked about the second floor being utilized as training, educational, and so, you would, you know, bring in some dentists, if you will, to go through. What would you see as a maximum number that, that could possibly, if you were running some type of a workshop or seminar, what, what could you see as a possible?
I mean, if we make a good study group, I would call those types of groups or workshops, 10 maximum. And it would be just like an evening or a Saturday where we just come together and get something catered and just have this... I mean, if we can make a good study group, I would call those types of groups or workshops. Ten maximum. And it would be just like an evening or a Saturday where we just come together and get something catered and just have this guest speaker. I would do it myself and just sit together and make a little presentation. That's, that's about it, yeah.
And parking, what is the, what is the parking that was identified for that site?
Mr. Buena Corso informed me that to the property, there's twelve spots that would fall into that category that are right next to the building. In his words, he said also, that's, I mean, this big parking spot that is behind it, nobody really, there's never really an issue. So, if I need more, I could, but I would never foresee really having that many. And there's two extra ones in front, right? In front of the building itself.
Right, right. Yeah, there is a shared, in that quadrant, there is a shared parking that's utilized, basically, from, you know, what I'll call the church property, Penfield Hots, and then those businesses behind the storefronts on, on Penfield Road.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, I think Board, you know, some of the, the questions, obviously, this building has been used for other commercial uses, you know, in the past. And I think part of the discussion this evening is, do we feel comfortable with this being, you know, part of our streamlined process? Or does the Board believe that this would, you know, require a, a public hearing before this Board? And, you know, go through that process. So, I think that's part of the discussion for us tonight.
I, I'm fine with the streamline on this particular application. I mean, past uses have been, you know, as commercial in nature at times. Doesn't look like there's any major renovations or interior disruption going on. Bringing, he's bringing some equipment in and probably some tables and some office-type plug-in equipment. Seems like parking is adequate for his needs. And it's not a real high-intensive type use. So, I, I'm satisfied with the streamlined process.
Okay, agreed. All right, then, what, any, any other questions for this Board? While, while you have us here and while you're here, as it relates to the proposed business that you're looking to operate?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have any questions, I'm gonna go it's too.
So, then.
Not yet. Yeah, no.
So, then, what, what this Board would do is, then we, we would direct Mr. Costello to prepare a letter to kind of follow up on this conversation. And, you know, to indicate that the Board looks favorably with moving forward with this. And then, and then there are a number of standard conditions that, that are associated with it. So, that, you know, you know, any sign that's, is placed in the building, you know, requires a permit and it needs to be within the sign ordinance. If you're gonna be doing any type of remodeling, that, that requires, you know, a permit from, you know, unless you're, you know, replacing carpet or, you know, doing things like that. But any, any type of addition of, you know, walls, you talked about doing some electrical work and things like that to make sure that those permits are followed. Would capture the information about the, the parking for that, for that area. And essentially do kind of a recap of, you know, of what you described the business to be. And, and then he would, he would get that, he would send that to the Board for our, our review to make sure that everything we discussed was included in that letter and that he would get that out. And, you know, typically, we do that in roughly a, you know, about a week turnaround time from the time that Mr. Costello puts the information together, gets it to the Board, and then out to, in this case, yourself as the applicant, would be about a, a week turnaround time.
Great.
So, when did, when did you plan on opening, what were you looking at from a timeline, potentially, to open up this operation?
Probably in January or February. My, my intended plan was to start moving as soon as I would be signed at least to move some of the equipment in, on a, on a, on a storage end just to get it out of my, my possession and utilize the space. Then whenever, how this process works, whenever there would be some type of approval, I would probably start purchasing some custom furniture that would go in and at that point, I would see, yeah.
My suggestion to you would be to have the Fire Marshal walk through the site with you to identify whether there's any past violations that we're not aware of, like, I'm not certain there are, there may not be. But you certainly don't wanna be the one to take care of that if there are. So, if you wanna do that, you wanna make sure that if you're gonna do some minor improvements, as Tony suggested, that they know what they are so they can use some guidance as to what needs to be done to get permits and everything else.
Yeah, great.
And I'll, I'll work that out with you.
Perfect. Okay. So, I wanna encourage you to just stay in contact with Mr. Costello now that you can put a name to the email, email address or a face to the email address. Just run everything through him, he'll send the letter out on behalf of the Town Board so that you have that as part of your files and part of your records.
Excellent.
Okay, great.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Good luck.
Thank you, yeah, it's exciting.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is under Lawn Finance, Action End's South Point Marina Expansion Project. Mr. Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. As the Boards are aware, we are finalizing the comment period ending in a couple of days to the FDIS. And I just wanted to jump back to the Board for the whiles to look at the site plan, but I just wanna go over some issues that the Board and the applicant are aware of, some of the things that I've been thinking about and let you all make decisions as to what you think is appropriate, based on that. I just wanna go over some of the details. Again, this deals with, just for the public's sake.
And this is the, I think this is the same layout by way of architectural design and what have you? And I think if I remember serves me correct, there are four, four, four different elevations on that?
Thank you.
All right.
As, as, just to give a brief history, the applicants initially came to the Board with the idea of constructing a twenty-seven-hundred-square-foot two-story building that was going to be, the first floor being a clubhouse for the marina, the second, with a pool. And it's got accessory parking, the second floor being a tiki bar. That was modified through the process. We held a public hearing to address the modifications, to increase the structure to be thirty-seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet. The first floor still being a clubhouse, the second floor being a sit-down restaurant. At this point, we have no knowledge of the operator of the restaurant. My comment to you is, is the Board would be that based on the fact that we are allowing the facility to be constructed without knowing who the potential operator is or what the intent is at this point in time in terms of their needs, that the recommendation would be to issue the conditionally used permit for the clubhouse, so they can, they can utilize that as the permitted activity. When the actual operator for the restaurant is, is determined to have that operator come to you, as you would any other restaurateur in town, as you did Danieli's in matter of fact, and have them come through the conditionally used press, process, as you would anybody else. So, that would be one of my recommendations. Some of the other things I've been thinking about, and actually, I'm glad you're here tonight because I think it's a discussion that we should have with you as the owner. The area where the Eagle's Nest is, and I know that it's very, very difficult now to get there because of what's occurred on the other property with the apartment complex, it's not an easy walk to get to the Eagle's Nest anymore. There's some change in grade and some other things. But thinking about the eagle and its environment there, I'm wondering if, and I've talked to the Board a little bit about it, but we haven't come to any conclusion that I'm aware of at this point in time. But the thought process would be to put a conservation easement over that portion of the property until such time as Eagle's Nest is no longer, you know, operational or useful on the site. And I guess I'd like to hear your comment about that and see if it's.
And I'd also like to give Paula, you know, maybe an opportunity, she's been, she's, she's our town liaison to the Conservation Board. So, she's been intimately involved and has attended all of those meetings for that. And I think before Mr. Danieli at least weighs in, give, give Paula an opportunity to, you know, for a couple of, a couple of comments on her part.
Sure, yeah, no, it's a good point, Jim. With respect to that parcel and just obviously sensitivity regarding that, the developer's certainly been sensitive throughout the process as well, as we've gone through the various agencies that input and including the Conservation Board's input. And they certainly are still, you know, keenly aware of that area and certainly have it on their radar as to, you know, what's gonna happen in the future with that area. And I think, given the fact that it's this landlocked parcel that, you know, is difficult to develop in and of itself, I think it does lend itself to discussion at least regarding a conservation easement to protect that area from further development.
Is, is there access from the adjacent property to it? Did you get, ever get access to it?
I mean, we, we have, we have an understanding with them that if at some point it were developable, that we would have access through their property. It's not formalized, as you, as you know, because it'll also be on a map somewhere.
Right, right.
And, I mean, there is no intent on, on developing it. I mean, for, obviously, the eagle is number one reason. And number two, it's cost prohibitive, I mean, just the, the way it's, it is. I mean, you know, if you spend two million dollars, you could put a home site on there. Now, it becomes a four-million-dollar home site that's very difficult to get to and that would not be a very marketable thing. So, you know, there's not, there has not been an intent to, to do anything on there. There is no formal easement going to there. I guess I would have to understand a little more what a conservation easement is.
You might not be familiar with.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think it's pretty much what it says it is. And certainly, there are timeframes that you could modify to accommodate the need. But the Conservation Easement would basically say that the property could not be further subdivided unless, you know, certain conditions existed, that being the eagle's no longer there. The property could not be developed. The property could not be harvested for timber or anything of that nature. The character of the, of the property would stay essentially as it is now. Now, whether that's for all eternity or whether it's for a period of time to that eagle is no longer there for one reason or another. I mean, those are things we can.
I mean, I guess we'd be, you know, to say forever, I, I'm not sure we'd be prepared to do that, especially since it's kind of a new, a new condition we haven't talked about, I mean.
And I think, yeah.
But if we were to say we're not gonna do anything as long as the eagle's there, I mean, I think, you know, that's kind of a, it, it's gonna be that way either way. But if, but if it would be a condition that would please the, the Board and, and make the Board comfortable that they've at least addressed that need. You know, the birds have been there, my understanding now, about nine years. And, you know, they've had probably six, six or eight offspring from there, and the offspring go somewhere else. And I think, from what I understand from our biologist, from Haynes, Mr. Haynes, is that it is kind of getting to the end of the cycle for those birds, although it's not uncommon for one of the young of that couple to end up being there, which, you know.
That they never move out of your house.
Right. And, and again, I mean, at this point, you know, we're happy to have them there. I mean, it's cool, people, you know, sit there and watch them and, you know, they're happy to be there and we're happy to have them there, so.
I think that was really the thrust in terms of the Conservation Board's discussion as they, you know, initially looked at this. And I, I think the comment earlier regarding, you know, minimal disturbance of the site as a whole. Certainly, that's, that's one of the charges of the Conservation Board is to, is to take a look at the, you know, beautiful and very important property, one-of-a-kind property in the town, that, and how can we best preserve that while certainly also recognizing your rights to development? And I think the Conservation Easement is, is ripe for discussion as far as, you know, to what level of requirement. I think that's, that can be flushed out. But I will say, I think the Conservation Board's concern was the Eagle's Nest. If that wasn't there, I don't think we'd be having this discussion regarding that parcel landlocked or not.
And even if it's not there, I mean, I don't see it being developed for as long as I'm gonna be presenting to this Board in our lifetime. I don't think that's gonna happen. But to say forever is a long time. So, you know, I guess to answer the question, as long as we tie it to the eagles, I think that's a reasonable request and almost a given already anyway.
Yeah, and I, and I think in fairness to the Danielis, and I don't think we were looking for an answer and hold you the answer right now. I mean, part of the discussion is proposing a potential idea that, that was raised. And certainly some nuances of a Conservation Easement, you know, can be worked out with Jim, you know, and more details of that. But I, you know, I just, we weren't expecting you to say yes, absolutely. It would be a mutually agreeable thought, yeah. I mean, I think the Board would have to be happy, you'd have to be happy. But I think the idea of having that for the eagle while it's there is probably a good thing.
And I think to be consistent with other Conservation Easements that have come before this Board, either a new or older ones, they, they can be renewed. So, it's not, it's certainly something that can be a short term and then looked at again given the circumstances of, of the property owner, the parcel, the eagles.
And they can be rescinded. I mean, if it's agreeable to both parties, they can, they can be rescinded. And that can be written in the document as part of the Conservation Easement.
So, I would certainly support something in a short term that would be looked at again to certainly keep the property flexible for the owner, but also safeguarding some of those, the interest, the Conservation-related interests.
And you're absolutely right, the federal regulations regarding eagle protection are not going to allow us to do anything on that site until he's decided he's no longer interested in being there, so.
And am I, would I be correct that that would be a, a condition of approval, like, in the resolution?
Yeah.
You know, that we, the condition would be that we understand that we're gonna come to some.
A mutually agreeable.
Understanding, and I mean, just obviously, you know, me saying we're tying it to the eagle, I don't wanna, you know, say forever and then.
No, the eagle's the, the main issue of that whole area.
Yeah, so, as long, I think we're on the same page.
I think, I think forever is kind of unreasonable anyways as far as the property and, and what potentially could or could not occur there given the habitat of the eagles.
Yeah, and again, in fairness to the applicant, I don't think we're expecting you to have, you know, hold you firm to an answer right now because I'm sure you've got some others you need to, to talk to.
Right, and I, and I mean, obviously, there's legalese involved in that.
Right, absolutely.
That we'll have to come to terms with, but.
Right. One of the other issues I wanted to talk to you about is, over the years, you've had boat storage on the site and off-season boat storage. And I'm assuming you wanna continue to have it behind the restaurant?
We've, we've debated, I mean, it has been reduced through the years just because the intensity of, of, of better use on the property, at least in our opinion, has increased. And, and once we build the, the restaurant and the clubhouse, I would anticipate that at most, it'll be reduced by another fifty percent and certainly restricted to down in that.
Yeah, and that's, that's.
Highlighted area that my bionic vision can see from here.
And that's what I was thinking because you are gonna have the restaurant here, you certainly don't wanna have parking facilities.
So, yeah, we would be fine to say, I mean, I can't see the exact boundary there, but.
Do you, do you see, let's just say, I mean, you know, Basil's is an established restaurant today. And then, you know, at some point, I guess in a perfect world, a restaurant gets going here and hopefully is successful at that point in time. If you end up putting, you know, some storage of boats over in this area or somewhere back in here, do you see any confrontation with parking between the two restaurants and the boat, and the boat storage?
I, I don't, because the amount of parking on that site, I mean, is designed to be sufficient for, you know, a three-hundred and whatever plus marina plus the two restaurants. So, you know, I, I wouldn't see there being any, any conflict. I mean, frankly, I could, I have room to put boats in the planned parking lot and still technically have enough spots for the restaurants. But, you know, whoever's operating that, whether it's us or somebody else, isn't gonna want a bunch of big boats covered in white plastic right in front of the restaurant.
Well, I mean, I appreciate you talking about putting the boats back here because in looking at this layout, I think that's also the appropriate place for them to be. So.
I agree.
I'm satisfied with that.
So, and I think, and I, so that I think the only other discussion point would be that, you know, if that's the area that, that boat, boat storage be allowed there until such time as was demonstrated that you needed any additional parking, you know, to support the restaurants. So, so in other words, you know, as it, as it is outlined here as being the, you know, kind of the general area for the boat storage, if it was found based on the success of the existing Basil and the new restaurant, if, if some additional spots would be required that the boat storage shrink accordingly in order to accommodate the appropriate parking.
Certainly. Yeah, that's logical and accepted.
Okay.
Great. The next issue was, I explained to the Board the fact that you and I had talked about this area where the pull-off is down there. That is owned by, by your, your family. Most people think it's the state DOT right away, which it's not. And I talked about the idea of providing an easement over this property to allow public access to continue on in a more formalized nature than it has been. I know you and your family and even your predecessors have been very good about allowing the public to go down there and feed the ducks or whatever it is, or even the kayaks. Just wanna get a feeling from the Board as to what you thought, think about that, recognizing that there may be liability issues if we take an easement.
And in fairness, I mean, we've been, we'd been advised long ago. And, and in fairness, I mean, we've been, we'd been advised long ago that we should put a big fence up around that and not let people go there and feed ducks, cause liability that we're talking about now exists for us now. You know, I, I can just imagine and it just didn't feel like the right thing to do, cause it would look awkward and be awkward. So, we figure it's been that way forever and we allow it to be that way. You know, I do think at some point, you know, maybe there can be a discussion with the state DOT, uh, or the town and say, make that a formal parking area, especially now that sidewalks, you know, the sidewalk development along that area is continuing. I mean, it'll be up to a point now where you can park your car there and walk safely on a sidewalk all the way up through the apartments. Whereas twenty years ago, you parked there and you can walk in the middle of the road, which wasn't, you know, a very attractive thing to do. So, you know, if there's a way to, you know, we, we offered it up as dedic, as, as offering an easement to the town, uh, you know, putting parking spaces there and allowing that as, as kind of the area. Uh, there was, the DEC had made a comment in one of their questions about where, where could the public truly park? That would be absolute public parking and we had given them the answer that we would be willing, uh, to give that area. I mean, I, you know, I wouldn't call it first class seating on an airplane, but, uh, it is, you know, not, certainly not in use and, and not in conflict with the parking needs of the marina.
Well, it's been used, I mean, it, it's, it was used as recent as this year and it's been used probably for the last thirty years or, or more. Once, you know, they, they did, uh, Empire Boulevard and it was, um, it was whatever it was. It was either a temporary, uh, storage area for equipment when they were building four forty-one. It was an area that, um, you know, uh, as they were doing it, uh, they thought that that might be an appropriate place for either a lookout or a rest area or a pull-off area or whatever, whatever that rationale is. You know, I think, um, up until recently, I think most people, you know, believe that that was a state bump out. And, you know, through this process, you know, identified that as being, you know, actually part of your parcel and not owned, not owned by the state. Uh, so I think, you know, having some additional conversation, I mean, I like the idea of, of, uh, having some public parking. Uh, we know that it does get used. You know, I think the, you know, the concern that everybody has these days and being in such a litigious society is, um, you know, if something happens, you know, who is, who is the, who is the one that is.
Gets the first letter.
Yeah, is on the hook, is on the hook, uh, for that. Uh, so sometimes as you try to balance what's, what's in the best interest of, of, uh, public access, uh, it's unfortunate that you have to think about, uh, you know, general liabilities and, uh, things, so. You know, I, from my perspective, it, it certainly does have some merit. Putting a fence up across, around that, I don't think that benefits you. I don't think that benefits the town, uh, and I don't think it benefits.
It was the lawyers that, that thought it benefited you.
I, I know. I, I, yeah, I, I, I hear you right on.
So, as I'm writing a resolution, um, what is your perception of what that should be for the future use?
Well, I, I mean, I think it still merits further discussion. I, I don't know if you can put anything in the resolution at this point. Um, because I do kind of a, a, agree with Tony and I think what you're saying, Tony, is we're not right, not quite ready to make a decision at this point, but we need to think about it and look into whether or not the, the town does something with this parcel, whether we can, whether we want to, um, liabilities involved. I mean, I'm sure the liabilities probably would be the same as the park right down the street too. I mean, I mean, it's a town park and so the town allows public access to the water through that park. So we would, the liabilities, I believe, would be the same here too, if the town took possession of us.
And one, and one could argue it's the same liabilities that we have in the four corners.
In all of our parks, in all of our town-owned properties.
Harriswell Park.
Right out here.
Right out here. I mean, it's, it's all, you know, it's all part of that, all part of that, uh, whole piece. And my guess is, is that, um, you know, who gets served is, is both entities get served, uh, with the hopes that the more that, the more that you serve, the, the higher the likelihood that you might get some return. Um, so.
So I don't know how you would put that in a resolution other than just, it, it's still a matter of discussion.
Yeah, if there was anything that, I don't think there would need to be anything in the resolution, uh, other than perhaps the understanding that we will continue to explore.
Yeah, I, I guess that's how you memorialize the issue of how you wanna deal with it.
And, and we'll continue to act as we have in the past, that we've owned it and, and the many years before that is that we're just gonna leave it and, you know, if, if the town at some point has a better plan for it, obviously, you know, we've been good neighbors and we'd certainly be open to.
Right.
It certainly doesn't seem to be a, a, a big, um, a big debate between two options or anything. It's just a matter of exploring.
It could be incorporated to the trail, the boardwalk that's been envisioned and, you know.
It certainly would be and we've worked with them in the past about that.
You connect that over here and all that, then, you know.
Crossing the bridge is a little tough. That's the, that's the hard part.
You, yeah, you're right. We talked about that with the Danieli family. We actually had money at one time. We just didn't have enough of it. We were actually going to build a boardwalk along this area to tie into their.
Well, see, that could be a further, you know, one feature grant or something. It might be an opportunity to, to continue the boardwalk.
Aquatic bridge, yeah.
Okay. Um, we've looked at the architecture and I think everybody's very comfortable with the architecture.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I like it. I think it's, um, it's open. It, it seems to match that area. I, I'm comfortable with the way that looks and I'm, I'm good there.
Well, it kind of fits in, I think it fits in through the discussion that we had at the public hearing and, um, all, all the discussion that we've had to date in this, uh, in this general, um, general area.
So you have two different, um, vendors, the, the clubhouse people and then the restaurant.
The clubhouse will be part of the Marina.
Oh, okay.
So that, that will be.
Nobody separate will be running that?
Correct. That, that'll be owned and operated by us. So the bottom floor is owned and operated by us. The second floor is, is being built as a restaurant. It started out being more of a bar, tiki bar. You know, those are the words that've been used. And, uh, you know, one of our, you know, as we were going through it, I mean, we're really not bar people and, and so we, we, we prefer to kind of lean it towards more of a restaurant. I mean, it will have a bar, certainly. Uh, but we didn't want it to be just a bar. We wanted to be a restaurant for a lot of different reasons and just.
You don't have a, a restaurant in mind yet?
Uh, unofficially, I mean, and I'll say it cause it doesn't matter, but the guys that own, uh, Murphy's Law and Half Pint and, uh, they're building another one somewhere and they, Churenza and, uh, John, can't remember his last name. But they're, 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 uh, one of the few bar restaurant operators, bar specific operators that, that have been around for a long time and seem to be mature and run a quality business and not really fly by night, so.
Right.
And, uh, everything they've done has been first class.
And you see Murphy's Law, you don't mean that it would be an Irish bar either.
Right, correct. And they probably, they wouldn't call it Murphy's Law.
Cause they have different.
Right, but, but if you've ever been there, you see, I mean, they put their money into the architecture. It's not just a hole in the wall.
Not there's anything wrong with that, Jim, right?
No, Irish is good.
So is this brick, is this brick in here?
I believe that's clapboard.
Okay. Looks different than the siding.
Yeah, the color looks different. It's, it's to reflect shade because those areas are covered, maybe. Cause I see that they did that there and I don't imagine that's a separate color.
Right.
That's sun coming in through, God knows.
We could have, uh, we could have, uh, pass for give you the details.
Yeah, that's.
I'll get that.
Cement, cement trim.
Yeah, it's a hardy board.
Hardy board.
No, and I, I like the outdoor dining area. I think that can be really nice in the spring, summer and in the fall. So I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with the way this looks.
One of the things on the site plan that I saw, the, the trail and the easement through the trail, one of the things that we had talked about was, you know, keeping things contiguous. We, we had talked about across here and through there as the, as the contiguous trail.
Not up there?
Not up here and through here. And again, you know, by not just meaning that it's not technically, uh, public and, and that's because we really don't want people down in this area, cause there's big, big trucks and trailers backing up and back and forth and it's really not a safe place for the general public to cross. Again, the reality is for the restaurant, we have signs that welcome people to take a walk on. I think we call it the Swan Trail or whatever. And, and so at the end of the day, it's still accessible, uh, to the public, but it's not technically public. Uh, you know, one of the comments throughout was we wanna make sure that there is public access and so, you know, the dedicated sidewalks that go all the way through down here, you know, all the way down and through the apartment. So it keeps it contiguous, cause if you.
And you do give the public the ability to get to the water.
I didn't know what the green highlight was.
Yeah, you give the, the public the ability to get to the water's edge here. It doesn't mean they have to be in this area. And you do get them to this point here. Um, so they're in good shape.
So it wouldn't be a part of the official boardwalk that.
No, people are gonna, people are gonna use it. I mean, if you just said today, people come out of the restaurant and if it's a nice night, they just kind of go down in this area anyways. Um, and so, you know, it, it, it will get used to some extent.
As, as an owner, as an owner, where, where it starts getting sticky and, and the reason, you know, you say public and you say private and, and, you know, there's been comments from people about, you know, keep out, cause this is a private thing and we're only gonna let people we want walk on here. It's not true. It's just, it becomes a matter of people are out there who are doing the wrong thing in the wrong place at the wrong time, it's a lot easier for me to go to my private, on my private property and say, you're not welcome here, uh, versus on a public sidewalk where you start getting into a gray area of who am I to tell somebody they can't walk on a sidewalk? I, it's not my right. So, when you're dealing with a Marina and restaurants, I mean, it is important to keep that degree of control.
Is it too close to your business, you feel, or is that what you?
Especially down by, not, not along the side, uh, over there, but when you start getting to the Marina, absolutely, yeah. You know, it's, it can be dangerous and, and the staff needs to have control of that area.
And while we're on the topic of the, the trails, um, obviously they're in the process of, uh, doing a design for the scenic overlook area. When we had our public hearing, uh, and I don't know if it was your intent, but certainly Pastor proposed a wood deck overlook with the, uh, tension wires as a guide rail system around it. And I, I really believe at this point in time, which in talking to Jasudo, what you're looking at is basically a graded out area with stone dust or something on it. And I think the board has to make a decision if that's what you want or if you want something more elaborate than, than that, that has more feature to it than, than just stone dust.
I mean, part of that was a back and forth with the DEC too. I mean, cause you're, we're in that one hundred foot area. Uh, I don't remember how exactly that evolved because, you know, frankly, you know, at one point we had talked about a gazebo out there and I know the DEC was cool on us building anything out there that might require foundation and such. And so it got, it got throttled back and, and ever since that point, everything on the plans has, has been a stone dra, dust trail, something that, uh, you know, wheelchair accessible, you know, that, that's a special stone or whatever, but, um.
Well, then do we need to find out what, what the DEC will or will not allow? Because I do remember the, you know, the, the public hearing or whatever the, the plans were that we were looking at showed that wood, um, deck area and, you know, I just wanna make sure that we're consistent with what we can or cannot do and what the DEC will allow. Is the, would the DEC allow something like that?
It's a di, design factor. If they're trying to maintain the existing grade, which is I think what you're trying to do, if you're trying to maintain the existing grade, obviously the DEC is gonna support that. If they were to use helical coils, for instance, to go in for support systems, uh, for foundation to allow for scenic overlook, I suspected DEC would allow that as well. In either case, you gotta get a permit from them to do it and, um, whether it's one or the other, I don't think it makes much difference to them in terms of what's happening. I think that they probably prefer helical coils going in with some type of a decking system that's elevated above that area versus just grading out the adjacent area. That's something we have to look at. And I think that, you know, the board has to be comfortable with whatever design you want.
Well, I think we need to find out first what the DEC will or will not allow to do, because then that gives the, the Daniels a, a perspective of, of what they can or cannot do. I mean, they're gonna have a very nice building right here and if the DEC's not gonna allow them to do something nice down here, I think we need to know that. But if the DEC is gonna allow them to put in a nice deck or something to complement the building and to complement the Marina, then I think they deserve to know that too.
Absolutely, and I will talk to Scott Schilly about that. I, in working with the DEC over the years in terms of our Cub Scout and Boy Scout projects, they have been very good about, um, allowing elevated walkways because you're really not disturbing the adjacent area.
It's a one-time.
Yeah, and you're not disturbing it, you're not filling the area, you're not doing anything to disrupt the, uh, the area, so. But I'll talk to Scott Schilly about that and make sure that he's comfortable with the area.
And, and I mean, they have reviewed these plans, obviously, you know, and, and we have submitted the Article twenty-four permit application. I believe the application was the stone dust. I think that's what they've been looking at at least, you know, for the last, whatever, eight months to a year.
So I think that's what they've been looking at. I think, I think what was, what was discussed at the public hearing and I think what they, they have been looking at might be two different things and I think we just need to, uh, understand those, uh, those dynamics.
Right.
And they can coexist. I mean, the DEC can go through the review. They're, they're not charged, as we are, with making sure that what has been presented and, and discussed at a public hearing is, is staying true so that ultimately that has been vetted out appropriately, you know, the, the, whatever structure is going to be there. I can say that that was an area, I know that, that, uh, the Conservation Board was, um, again, also very interested in having a specific lookout, um, from a photography standpoint.
Bird watching.
Bird watching, things like that.
Right. And then to finalize the trail issue, um, I've marked this area in orange. This area, uh, is an area where Anthony is needing a, an easement to the town of Penfield for, for hiking purposes. Their intent is not at this point in time, nor are we asking them to install a, uh, a, uh, walkway area. Uh, I'm anticipating at some point in time, we're gonna have to go to the DEC and do an elevated walkway area. It doesn't really go anywhere. It comes into a hill area, but it is still a very nice area to walk to. It goes to the cove, which is really nice. And then, um, it does provide the public with the ability to get over there if they want to. So, uh, we will work with them to come up with an answer as to what should be out there, um, as a final design. But that's not their responsibility at this point in time.
I'd, I'd like to go back to this, um, this pull-off area. Since, since you've owned that, uh, Anthony, have, have you, have, have you done anything to that area?
No, absolutely nothing.
So, uh, you haven't, you haven't done any, you know, paving, patching, anything, mowing, uh, anything along those lines? Uh, just as, as it has been for basically thirty years?
Correct.
Okay.
The, the only thing that I just wanna bring up that hasn't been discussed tonight is the other end of this proposed trail here towards Empire Boulevard is sort of the, uh, apparent ingress egress, um, to the west side of Basil's. Um, sort of where that trail is, the Swan Trail. And I, I remember it being a discussion point at the public hearing. I, I believe that I was, um, I asked the question maybe to the engineers. I, I can't remember, uh, the full depth of the conversation at this point. But, you know, I, I strongly suggest that with the improvements to Empire Boulevard and then obviously with the, the enhanced parking because the, you know, I have seen vehicles utilize that, that road before. And it, it's also been utilized as overflow parking maybe, um, for the busy holidays. But I would propose that we lock that off completely, um, to vehi, you know, to vehicle traffic. Um, with the sidewalk there with the improvements to Empire Boulevard and not create any form of public safety or ambiguities by having any vehicles being able to access that. So I would propose that, you know, that becomes, ideally it would be curbed off. Uh, so it's, it's pretty definitive that it cannot be accessed from Empire Boulevard. I mean, that the sidewalk is there again and then, you know, just having vehicles not being able to drive between the waterfront and the side of the building. So, uh, I don't know if you'd wanna address that at all, but that would be my suggestion to the board and, uh, you know, moving forward.
Yeah, I mean, you know, historically it has, you know, it has been lawn area, um, you know, three hundred and sixty days a year. And then five days a year, you know, uh, there have been times definitely where cars park there, you know, overflow. Uh, but, you know, the, the, the hope is and the anticipation is that we've accounted for that in the additional parking, you know, and, and up until.
Right.
And including now, um, you know, there are times where, you know, that, that additional parking was necessary. You know, we've made some improvements to the parking down there that has eased it, uh, quite a bit, um, through the years. to the parking down there that has eased it, uh, quite a bit, um, through the years. And, and this, you know, this improvement should make it so that it's pretty clear that there are parking. I mean, people don't wanna park on, on grass or on dirt. They do that only if there's nothing left. So we would hope that there's now not going to be that time, uh, almost ever.
It provides facilities now for people on the, uh, in the marina.
You know, we've talked to the DOT about the curbing and stuff up there, and, you know, they, they, they just say, "Well, it's not an entrance," so, okay, you know.
People's landscaping or something?
You can. You know, if, if somebody's, if somebody's intent on driving through there, they're gonna drive through there. I mean, outside of putting up a fence.
DOT said there, "It's not an entrance?"
It's not an entrance. I mean, if you look on their maps, it's not a driveway.
And how, how can it be utilized?
Because the curb, because they stopped putting curbing at that point. Just like, you know, you can go down this road, Atlantic, right here, and I mean, if you wanted to turn onto somebody's lawn, you could do that in many spots.
Would they be a, do, do we know DOT would be opposed to extending the curb?
Certainly, they would be opposed to, because they're looking to minimize curb cuts on the right-of-way.
Yeah, they don't want, they, they want approved and defined, approved and defined, uh, access points is what, is what they're interested in and not, and not, and not creating either secondary or, or even temporary type of accesses unless it's come before them for any type of review. I mean, typ- typically it's got the access point to the, you know, to the east, if you will. Uh, it's the primary, that's the primary in and out, and, uh, you know, everything else should be, you know, you know, non, non-access. So, I think, I think, uh, you know, certainly just taking a look at, uh, that. Again, some of it may have been driven, some of it may have been driven by, uh, the fact that, uh, not having enough or sufficient parking. Um, that, that is, uh, you know, being addressed by this plan, and if there is something that can be done to discourage that, uh, you know, then I think that's something that we, you know, that we at least take a look at or kick around.
Yeah, we do have, we do have pilings with like rope on it, uh, that kinda define that, that area down there. And, uh, you know, we have pilings with ropes that people have taken out so that they can get their car through on those busy days, you know, and that's, and really as far as using that access, that was, that was pretty much the only time. I mean, I, I've seen cars go in and out of there, so I'm certainly not, you can go there and you can see, you can see where they've gone in and out. But, but it's, you know, they're driving on grass and dirt, and, and actually there's a part where they have to go over the, uh...
The swale.
The swale, you know, with rocks, the riprap that, that, that filters the water going out. So I mean, it's not, certainly not a defined road, you know, people that are hell-bent on going over it do, and, uh...
I think, I think, uh, the key is, is to discourage that even more, uh, I think is what, is what I'm hearing, uh, from, from Rob. So I think that's, that's something for us to just take a look at as well. Okay.
So the direction the board is in terms of closing it off? Are you looking at full-blown curbing? Or are you looking at instructions to keep people?
I can only speak, speak for myself here, but I would prefer any and all measures to make it not even look close to an ingress or egress. So, i- i- and I understand that the, the developer would have to probably bore some of that financially, and I'm not asking for anything over the top, but I, I think that up to that point, we should look at whatever possible mitigating factors there are, whether it's enhancing the swell, extending it, um, putting up a couple of, uh, bollards there, maybe at the end of the sidewalk, whatever it may be, to landscaping bushes to further discourage, discourage any form of, of traffic there.
Then grade out the portion of the right-of-way to ensure it's not a hard base. So it's not, it's not like curbing or any of that?
Well, I'd be supportive of landscaping, at least as a start, to say, that's a little bit.
Okay. Other, other questions, comments?
Um, just, just other normal stuff now that we're working on. Um, they'll have to provide a landscape, a finalized landscaping plan. They'll be working with Bruce Sorecki and then certainly bringing that back to you for review and sign-offs.
Right, right.
And then, um...
Which will now include, I guess, this end?
Yeah, yeah, it'll be part of that. And then, um, that's pretty much it. Um, just, the other part of that, too, is just making sure that we have shared parking agreements for both properties, uh, which is not a good deal. We do that with everybody anyway, so...
Right, right. I mean, that's standard, that's standard, uh, items that, that we use, and, and the intent would be, obviously, to make, make sure that we continue that, uh, through for those, 'cause they, s- some of the peak times will probably differ a, a little bit from one to the other, depending upon the type of restaurant that, uh, that is there, so...
Okay, you guys agree? Yes, and they have one already for Basil's, and we'll have to, that's the standard operating requirement, is that we have a maintenance agreement to make sure that if you guys end up, we want the eagle someday, and somebody's there to take care of everything and does what they're supposed to do, so... And you guys do, you're in the property, so it shouldn't be a big deal. Other than that, I, those are the issues that came to mind as I was going through the final design features.
Those are all good points.
Okay, so, uh, board comfortable with Mr. Castello drafting up, um, uh, in, in detail for, for us to, to review a re- resolution of approval for, uh, this project?
Well, just, I, you were gonna ask the same thing, but, uh, as far as the, the condition, so some of the conditions will be then the overlook area or, 'cause I know that that hasn't been resolved tonight.
Yeah, there's, I need, I need to do some things.
I was gonna say, we have to do some, Mr. Castello's gonna have to do some things.
I'm not sure we're, we're totally in agreement on what will happen with what is public access around the back. I mean, I, we kinda discussed it, but I don't really know what that means yet. I mean, are we gonna have private property signs there once you leave Basil's? Is it going to be completely open for you to walk around? Are we gonna try to reroute people through the park? I, I just...
Well, one of the features is, as I mentioned earlier, we have to have wayfinding signs, so there'll have to be some signs there along the way identifying that this is the walking area. Um, if you wanna come back this way, you can certainly, it'll end here. It'll say terminus of walking area here and here. Uh, people can come in here, they can park here, they can go in, they're allowing them to park here. They can come in and walk along the perimeter of the properties on the shoreline, so...
Okay, so it'll be sort of the non-green area is...
Yeah, and this is the easement area that we're looking at to get the public out to the water's edge.
I understand now.
But, but, but also, but also being sensitive about routing people through...
Away from the area.
Right, and so there's gotta be, I mean, human nature is that, uh, you, you can't fix stupid. Uh, you do what you can, uh, you do what you can to try to manage and control, uh, but you do have folks that, uh, will, as Anthony has said, take down ropes, uh, they'll do all sorts of things. So I mean, you've gotta, gotta try to, you know, make sure that you're not setting them up from a liability standpoint, uh, and, uh, so having, you know, having the appropriate signages and the, and the, and the terminations there, so that they know that, uh, you know, there is an area of, of separation, that is, being able to allow the public, uh, you know, to see or get to the waterfront, but also not, uh, encumbering them as it relates to operations of, of the, uh, the parking and the, and the marina aspect of it.
And it's really, yeah, it doesn't have to be contiguous in every spot, um, the fact you provide...
No, and I wasn't arguing that. I, I just, like I said, I, I was just a little unclear from the conversation earlier, but I, I understand, I understand where we are now, so I'm in agreement with that.
Well, I'm a little unclear, because what Anthony was saying, he was saying about the multi, the trail, the main trail, it's not gonna be that. It's gonna be on the Empire.
That's correct.
Well, to get from, to get from here to here, you come around this way and then come back up, and then you can come back over this way. But he's right, I've been down there several times during this application process just to see what's going on. There were days when it was very busy. You got people actually backing boats up into the water that aren't seeing everything around them. Luckily, there's nobody there when it was happening, but...
I know, I know, but I was thinking, should we have signage or something that leads you not, not that way?
Yes, yes, and that's what, one of my comments is that we have, that we have to, they have to provide wayfor, wayfinding signage to identify the path.
That path.
They can bring it, yeah, and they can bring it this way if they want to.
If this where they're wanting to go that way.
Our original conversation was having this down through here, as, as, you know, to your point, the green, and having this area down here be contiguous. I mean, not a gate, not a, you know, but, you know, having this area kinda being a controlled area, because it is near the marina, you know, to your point, you know, where, where are you drawing, this is different.
This is where I'm getting confused again, so...
Exactly, you know, 'cause I'm drawing the line here.
Right.
You're drawing the line here.
Well, I'm saying there'll be signs here saying, "End of path, end of path. Can't, no, no entrance here." All right, so you can't go in here. You'll have, say, say park here. You walk down, you come over here. You can come back up here, check out the water area in here if you want. If you wanna go over here, then you come back down this way, back over as you suggested, bring it back up, and have them come in this way. And that gives them the ability to go to the scenic trail.
You know, the, the purpose of public access really was defined by down here, albeit, you know, this is certainly an area where people will want to be, but when you say park in a public space and walk to the, to water access, you know, most people are gonna, most people are either gonna come down to about here, because we have, you know, the little bridge there, and that's where you can get close.
Right.
And, or they're gonna come down to here, because that's...
That's why you need some signage to tell you that, no, keep going down there and go over here.
But we just don't wanna encourage people to then go down here, because, you know, to, to the supervisor's point, I mean, when you get to here, let's face it, what are you gonna do? I mean...
You're gonna jump across.
You're gonna walk across here.
Well, and you can, but you can do something, you know, to prevent that from happening. I mean, it doesn't have to just be a dead, you know, a dead walkway. I mean, there, there could be fencing, there could be something there to keep people. The intent is to give them the ability, a- and, and even if you wanna do something where you're even closer to the water's edge and just move it further away to get it right on the water, and then ha- just have like a little turnaround to come back like this, and then it just ends here.
That'd be smart.
And you don't do anything over here. You just keep it over here. There's no need for them to be over here.
But that's how, you know, the, the people from the marina also have access to that, so I mean, it is, it is contiguous, 'cause marina people can walk out here and go this way and go this way, I mean...
But I, I don't, I don't anticipate throngs of people coming here to do this. You might get a family that's walking out there or something like that.
They will after they have dinner or something. They see a swat and they wanna walk around.
Yeah, but this is different. But they're, they're paying customers.
And again, I guess I wanna clarify, well, we're, we're talking about two separate things, because that trail, the highlighted green, will be there. It is there now, I mean, maybe not this, but it will be there. And, and we are, we are going to put in and improve whatever it is. The second question is, at what point is it truly public access, and at what point is it just a, a, a trail that may be private, albeit a trail, and, you know, we're not gonna put up a fence. I mean, what I would propose, again, originally we were here, you know, I, I would propose maybe drawing the line there and, and drawing the line, I don't know, somewhere not, not so close to this, to, to discourage the fact that it's a public access. Or, you know, here I would put a sign that says to outlook this way, so that you're not wandering off.
No, I disagree, I disagree with that. I, I think, I think the, the, gotta remember, the whole purpose of allowing this to occur was to encourage additional public access to the water's edge. I, I think it's important that the public have the ability to go up here. I do agree with you, they don't need to be in this area, and maybe we pull this back a little bit, so that it's not so close to that area where you just, you know, you discourage them from doing it, and maybe you just have a little loop or something that you just turn around and come back, and then keep this area out. And you could probably do the same thing over here, because there is a lot of operational activity taking place in this area with traffic and everything else. Maybe you do the same thing here and bring it back, so that they're not, and that, that lets them know that they can't. I mean, human nature will be, if I get there, I gotta come back around.
If you're building this boardwalk map, you're gonna be telling, you're gonna have it on the map to go that way.
Yeah.
Around and everything, but this is like, it's a little trickery. It's not the main...
But it's fine. It gives, it gives the public one more option to get to the water.
But there should be signage that continues to...
And there will be. There will be, I've got way, wayfinding signage as an issue.
It'd be okay.
I, I don't disagree. I, I, this is a very busy area, and it doesn't have to have the public in there, you know...
But, but it's gonna have, you know, we're gonna put the trail all the way to the marina, because somebody from their boat's gonna go to the pool and the restaurant, and they're, and they're...
That's fine. I, I don't, I don't disagree.
Kinda two different conversations.
I don't know why, I don't know why the general public would wanna go down to that area if they don't have any special interest in that site.
Well, not necessarily whether they would want to, but whether they would. Because there's a path.
That's what I'm saying, terminate the path back here.
Kinda to go that way.
Terminate the path here, and then if you want something to go on. I, I think the key is, this has been a viable area for the public to gain access to the water's edge. It should stay in place. This area here can be pulled back a little bit if they wanna have, you can have a sign saying, "Members only" from this point on. I mean, that's, that's no big deal. Everybody will respect that. And then have people just turn around and come back. Majority will, and then have people come in. The best part of the area is basically over here. This is the area that's, it's, it's the pretty area. That's where you'd wanna go. So I, 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 I think, I think that it's important to maintain access to the water's edge from these areas.
I think a good compromise is to maintain that, but pull it, pull both...
Yeah, you can pull it back here if you want, just to keep it away from it.
And I think the members only is a, is a good option. I think, you know, members like to see members only sign. They like to know that there's something that additionally...
And then we'll do something along here saying, you know, Daniele, Daniele.
Public access.
Access route, or whatever you wanna call it.
Or not the Castello?
No, I don't want my name anything, except for, except for my paycheck with his name.
Just have a little thing to the overlook, seem, to see the overlook, you know, the sign over there.
We will come up with signage that you'll, you'll look at and approve.
So people will go, "Oh, maybe we should go there instead of..."
This will be the better area to look at. I mean, this is where all the environment is, so... But I, I do believe that the whole premise of this was to get more access, and that's what we've done.
That's understood.
And they've offered it, so... We will work out details to keep the public away from this area, and I fully agree with that. They shouldn't be over there. No, or not. Those are the issues.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so, um, uh, have Mr. Castello prepare a draft for us to start to take a look at, uh, so that, uh, we can make sure that all of these items that we've talked about, not only tonight, but up to this point, uh, you know, at the different, different settings, uh, within, uh, you know, the discussion of this whole project, uh, to get that drafted up and for us to, to take a look at. All right, excellent. So we'll look forward to seeing something that we can, we can, you know, you know, add or make sure that, uh, we've got everything addressed that, that we have discussed.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, great. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Drive careful.
Thanks, Senator, yeah.
And, uh, and be safe out there.
You too.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, before we move on, and to keep, uh, to keep our record in minutes straight, I did bypass the monthly reports, and so I apologize for that. Uh, today was the day for all the monthly reports to be in. Uh, we are missing one from the assessor's office. Local history room, PCTV, and personnel are the ones that are outstanding, so I would anticipate that we would see those over the next day or two. Okay, um, we'll move on. Still under lawn finance, we're on amendments to the zoning ordinance, hydro fracking ban, and, um, Mr., Mr. Castello.
Thank you. Uh, had a public hearing on December 3rd regarding the amendments to the zoning ordinance that would, in effect, prohibit hydro fracking on the Penfield. It does include numerous amendments throughout the document. Uh, we've got them all identified, and, uh, the board is comfortable with moving forward with a resolution. The staff can incorporate that into the document, and then it will become effective after the, I believe the Attorney General has to receive a copy of it.
I think that's correct.
And then it will become effective after that. So I guess, is the board comfortable at this point in time of having a resolution prepared or not?
Yes, I am, yes.
I think we are. Uh, you know, we've vetted out, um, you know, everything on that, and, uh, uh, worked with the consultant and, uh, Mr. Horowitz on that, so I, I feel comfortable with moving forward with that.
Very good, I will prepare that.
So, prepare a resolution, uh, for that. Okay, great. Uh, that'll bring us down to public works. Out of district user, uh, we didn't get Benway, but we got the, we got the better of the, we got the better of the pair, so...
Yeah, one, one side of the pair.
Mr. DeFrancesco.
Thank you, Tony. So, a while back, we received this letter from Town of Arandaquay on behalf of two of their landowners, um, being Nick Masters owning three parcels on Empire Boulevard, and Demontesus Gitzes owning two parcels on Empire Boulevard. Uh, this application is to ask for your approval to connect to sewer district number 12. Um, when we constructed that sewer district, as you know, we left easements to the Town of Arandaquay on both the north side and south side of Empire Boulevard, so there was some forethought put into properties connecting in. And, um, as you know, we, we already have... And, as you know, we, we already have an overall umbrella agreement with the Town of Arandaquayt's, the cell landing sewer district down there, and that agreement specifies that every landowner that wishes to connect to the Penfield district has to come before you and ask for the out-of-district-user request, so that's where we're at right now. As you know, the area, there's Masters, the Stone Company, but they've got a vacant park, actually, two vacant parcels next to the Stone Company. And then Getzus owns the Bayfront Restaurant plus a home down there right next to the creek.
Just next door to that.
Yeah, so, it's, it's three structures at this point, and in the future, you know, probably could be developed into some more. The, the Arandaquayt agreement and, and the out-of-district-user agreements also specify that this approval is granted to the current uses, so there's an ability for us to review any future applications as they come back for capacity and another...
So it doesn't continue to run, it's, it's specific to this.
So that, so that if Masters sold the property and they wanted to put in, and Arandaquayt approved a 200-unit structure on that site, we would have the ability to go back and just make sure that, that doesn't have negative impact on our, on our sewers.
Correct.
And then, the other piece of this is that we already have one parcel that is in, into this, which is McMillan's Marina, is already part of this, and came in for an out-of-district user. So that, that sewer is in, and they are currently connected.
Correct. How are the properties to the north serviced? There's two...
McMillan owns two parcels.
Oh, is that the property to the north?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, okay.
And it's, it's, it serves as one operation. Got full storage, and he's, they drill under the creek with pressure force.
Okay.
And that, and that is, that unit is, or that, that line is physically in today.
Okay.
Comfortable with that?
Yeah.
So we'll be looking for a resolution for out-of-district-user status for these parcels.
Operating you to sign that, that agreement. That would be, I think, maybe the second meeting in January now, correct?
Well, this, this is, this is what I would say, is that, you know, historically, historically, the, the board has, you know, utilized the organizational meeting, you know, to set all of the activities for the year. And, you know, over the last handful of years, we have streamlined, you know, we have streamlined that organizational meeting by compartmentalizing things. So if, if we have some onesie-twosie resolutions to come in for that, I don't think the board has a problem with that based on, you know, and so I think it's in the interest of, of good government to move forward with this. I think this is a pretty straightforward thing. It's something that, that we, you know, routinely do from time to time, and those parcels that are not connected to sewers, that we'll bring in as out-of-district users. And you, you will do that a couple of times, typically during the course of, you know, any given year at different locations. So I would say, Mark, we can draft that up and have that in for...
Do we have a ledge meeting?
We do not have, we have a ledge meeting on the 17th, so if you're able to do it for the 17th, that's a way to do it, and if, for some reason you can't, I, I don't think the board has a problem with bringing it in on the 7th.
Fair enough.
Okay?
Very good.
All right, that will then take us to storm sewer, sanitary sewer easement release, Baytown Plaza expansion.
Thank you.
Mr. DeFrancesco.
I'll give you a second to get these maps. And briefly, we've got two separate actions happening here. One for storm sewers, which is the first page, and one for sanitary sewer, which is the next two pages. So I'll start with the storm sewer, the top page. The re, the la, new layout of the Walmart store and the revised plaza has caused these, will be, eventually be encroachments and relocations of some of the storm system in, in the plaza network. There's a lot of storm sewer in the plaza that's private, but what you see here in yellow is currently town-owned drainage easement with piping in it that is going to be in the way. And then the, the green is what is going to be replacing that, that pipe system with a much larger pipe system, and, which takes, there's a little drainage pond back there on the side of Walmart, you may know the area, takes that offline and pipes it on through to, to Daniels Creek Apartments, thanks, Mark. So this, this storm action is basically a release and replace. So that would be an authorization the board would need to, to make.
And, and, and Mark, I think I know the answer to this question, based on your, your comment about going to Daniels Creek. And so, there, this new, this new proposed sewer easement picks up here, the back lot of Guy Grace Lane, and pulls everything north back to that, that location, going under Brant Point Drive, and then continuing north from there.
Correct. The reason there isn't a yellow line connecting to Guy Grace Lane currently is because the storm sewer comes out of Guy Grace Lane and enters onto a concrete gutter, and we never took an easement over that concrete gutter.
Got it.
That gutter goes into the pond, and then it leaves the pond through the pipe system.
And then it leaves the pond through the pipe system, so, okay. Okay, good.
And then on the sanitary side, the top page is a little portion of the sanitary easement that we'll be releasing. It's actually unused at this point, and is interfering with the, the street of shops area. And then if you open the second page here, this is what is replacing the, some of the sanitary easements on the site to make the system function as it was approved on the utility plan. So this will be an easement we'll be taking in yellow.
Yep.
And the only release is the small portion on the first page.
And so that, that, that chunk that is being abandoned, ultimately that just moves to the, to the north to that new piece?
It's, it's actually, correct, yes.
Just, it just moves to the north of that, and then is that just gonna be abandoned in place, Mark? Is that what the intent would be?
Actually, Tony, the pipe isn't even in that portion of the easement.
Okay, all right.
Abandoned, so...
Yeah, yeah, we, we picked that up, and so it's, it's currently in its, its, its existing location.
It's an existing place?
Yeah, so...
So basically, the easement, the easement's just being abandoned and then better defined to reflect the actual location of the pipe.
That little portion is what I would say is surplus, surplus.
Okay.
So putting things up.
Concerns, problems, anybody's good for that? And do a resolution for the 17th for that one as well?
Certainly, try.
Okay, good. All right, so we'll move on to the Valentine show for the next, the next three items. And, Mark, you're certainly welcome to stay, but if you, if you need to go snowblow everybody's driveway to keep the women folk in your life happy, we understand that.
Thank you very much.
All right, so Mr. Valentine?
Thank you. I have three sidewalk waiver requests tonight. The first is 1822, Sweet Corners Drive. It's actually a combination of two properties. 1830 was in previously, did receive a sidewalk waiver last year when they combined that. So it's 1822 is the next piece. It's almost all the way to the county line. Mr. Arena's buying, the two parcels combining together, looking to develop a horse farm for his, his family on that property, so... PRC's recommendation, based on the map, there are no sidewalks anywhere in that area. PRC's recommendation is to obtain the easement and then take the sidewalk waiver fee of $500, but not require that the sidewalk be installed.
Consistent with what we've done in that area?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Number two is 1556, Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. This is a piece east of here, just north of Penfield Center Road on the east side. A gentleman bought the property, he's looking to put a, a small house building on the property just as a, as a recreational area for his family. Has a small piece of frontage, there are no other pieces of sidewalk on 250 in that area. Again, PRC's recommendation is take the easement, take the sidewalk waiver fee, but not have the sidewalk installed.
Yeah, nobody screwed it there?
Yeah.
All right.
The third one is actually a dual request. First is for a sidewalk waiver, 1650 Kennedy Road. The board granted a waiver to the property, it was just to the east of the, was the Samuel's property that came in sometime last year. So the first piece is asking for the sidewalk waiver. PRC is, is supportive of that, again, with the granting of easement and the sidewalk waiver fee. The second, Mr. Relia, who's buying the property, is asking for a waiver from the town's street tree policy. Currently, he has a contract with Jim Wilbert to farm the property. He has planned on placing his house 700 feet back, it is an open farmed area. He just doesn't want to have the trees along the street frontage. In his letter, he said, you know, obviously wants to keep it open, have that area farmed in the front for a short period of time. He said he's willing to donate, plant the trees in a different location off of his property in order to meet the environmental compliance associated with it, so... Obviously, probably asking for a waiver altogether, but if the board wasn't considered of a waiver, he would be glad to, you know, donate those trees to a town park or something else, just didn't want to have them along the frontage, he wanted to keep the open farmland left to his property.
Sounds good. That's gonna replant.
So you wanna waive it altogether, or do you have any interest in those trees being, you know, potentially donated to a park?
It seems like it's a weird thing to have it together on the same, you know, be lost in the shuffle that this happened along with the sidewalks.
I mean, we'll, I'll issue two separate letters on it, just to separate those. I just paired them up just for the agenda, 'cause it was the same parcel. We'll do the sidewalk waivers as a, as a separate item.
So how big are these trees, the trees that...
Two-inch caliper, you know, we require street trees to be planted.
Under our design criteria, there is a requirement for street trees.
Typically, they're done in subdivisions to reestablish, you go in and...
Could they be saved to go to one of our parks, should they?
The trees that currently don't exist.
No, these are to plant.
These are new trees.
I'm sorry, but to plant.
Our requirement says he has to put...
Oh, I thought you were taking down trees to plant new trees.
No, 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 it's an open farm field right now. Our policy says, and most of the intent is for new subdivisions, to clear them out, to establish a subdivision, put some trees back in. It's an open farmland, he likes the open farmland field to it, he's just saying, I don't, I don't wanna install trees along my frontage.
And there's a benefit to have it remain farm, remain farmed land, that I think trade off is fine.
Yeah, so I guess it's a two-part question. First is, are you supportive of a outright waiver altogether? Seeing it's in East Penfield, it's not in a subdivision area. That's the first question, where the answer is no, are you supportive of putting the trees, you know, someplace else, or having him, donating them to a park, or some...
It's a rural area, it's farming, the waiver's fine.
Yes.
So I think, so I think, I think it's, it's an okay to waiver for the sidewalk, get the easement, and get the $500, and then for the trees, based on what I'm hearing from Councilman Moore, that, you know, it is all agricultural now, and we'll waive that, that tree because of the amount of agricultural in that area.
Versus, versus land that's being developed and having structures put on it and then subdivision?
Yeah, there are trees in the back of this property, he's leaving those, he's not touching any of that piece. He's putting his home on an agricultural area, and just continuing with Mr. Wilbert to have that area farmed at least in the near future.
Okay. All right, that brings us to informational items. It looks like you're still in the batting box.
Okay. One of our goals for the year in the, in the planning department was to look at our, our fees. This is something I emailed out to the board last week. Had Doug Sangster, our new planning tech, take a look at this and evaluate one, what our costs are, what we have today. So the top sheet basically is what we charge for a planning application. So anybody that walks in the door, if it's a planning board sketch, they pay $100. It's a flat rate, whether it's one lot, 50 lots, whatever, commercial fee is $200. So my first course of action is to see, one, are we covering our costs? So the second sheet kinda shows, you know, for each application, based on our neighbor notification policy, we send out a postcard to everybody within 500 feet at a minimum. Based on the size of the parcel, it gets much bigger. Typically, we're in the 50 postcards per application, but obviously you can understand as we get into Baytown or get into some of the bigger applications, again, they play a, a flat rate as a commercial fee, or how big it is, we get upwards of 300, 400 postcards that go out. So if we're paying 33 cents a postcard, actually buying the postcards, seven cents a piece, sign postings cost us $20 to have them go and put the sign up saying, "Properties under review," and then $57 for application fees, we're running 100-plus, and in some instances, not covering our costs just on materials alone. And then I added in a generic, not even a review fee, we do collect an engineering review fee, we looked at that as well, and it seems like we're kind of in the ballpark with other communities, but if we have a planner, has to write the legal, has to, you know, at least do some basic prep, and a clerk, you know, two hours to intake the application, make sure everything's there, put it into our system, and again, running, you know, well above what the fees are collecting. The third page is, is kind of a boiled-down version, and it's, it's very hard to compare town to town. We try to do the best we can, every town calculates it different. Some towns, based on square footage, some are lot numbers, some are a flat fee, some are based on the percentage cost of what the project is. So we said if it's a 50-lot subdivision versus a commercial application, basically, I'm running those numbers, Penfield, we are the lowest-charging town in all of Monroe County.
Yeah, look at that.
The average is about $560, we're charging $120 on residential, and the average on commercials, about $530, we're charging $150, so... Just, you know, wanted to bring that to the board. I gave you guys copies, and I do have, Doug provided a spreadsheet that he did evaluate, and I can pass these around, big 11-by-17 sheets. Along with the spreadsheet I sent you, and this shows every town within Monroe County what their costs are broken down. Just kinda wanted to broach the conversation with the board, have you take a look at it, and, you know, whether it's, it's time to reevaluate what we're charging, at least to make sure we're covering our costs, and that any applicant coming in who's initiating a project is at least covering their costs, and it's not onto the residents that, you know, they're incurring through their taxes, you know, as part of their application, that's not being borne by the residents, that an applicant is fully covering their costs. Just wanted to broach that conversation tonight, get you guys the information. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, or if there's any additional research or information you'd like us to pull up, we'd be glad to follow up with that.
So the first thing I'd, I would like to do is, I'd just like to compliment Mark and his team for pulling this together. I think one of the things, one of the things that, you know, our, our number, our departments do is to take a look at, how are we making sure that we're, we're covering our costs and trying to minimize the spread of cost out to the, you know, to the tax base? And so I think, you know, the work that they did, and, and the fact that they recognized that we may be at the lower end, I wanted, I made note, I wanna say it was in the, I don't know if I still have it, Mark, but I think it was 2000, 2010, I think it was the last time we may have made some of these.
I had noted, it was last revised in 2010.
2010. So it's been, it's been four years, and we've, you know, we've kind of remained somewhat status quo. And again, I think the intent is not to, is not to, you know, try to add a lot of fees. However, as an average taxpayer, they shouldn't be absorbing for new potential applications coming in. So I think Mark and his team did a great job of kind of pulling this together and kind of giving us a summary of kind of where we are. Again, he, he mentioned, I'll just reinforce, it's not a perfect apples-to-apples, but it certainly does give us the sense that we're more on the low end, you know, from a, from a countywide standpoint than, than even average or at the high end.
And including the engineering costs.
And this doesn't, what I was trying to talk tonight wasn't even getting into engineering fees.
Right, right.
Some towns, many towns don't have a town engineer on staff, so they basically say, "This is the base cost," and then plus any engineering fees incurred. We always say, you know, "We have a base level of engineering review fee, and then if it goes above and beyond that, or we have to farm out for traffic studies or other things, then that's a cost, you know, that again, can be borne by the applicant." But, so again, that was kinda hard to compare, but just the first two columns on that second page, I tried to boil it down to, you know, some charge a flat rate, some charge a flat rate plus a... it down to, you know, some charge a flat rate, some charge a flat rate plus a per lot fee, some charge a percentage based on, you know, the development cost. You know, so it's hard to kind of say this is apples-to-apples, or, you know, there's many different costs, but I mean, it ranges from, and I think it's been supported even more, some communities are, you know, thousands of dollars, just walking in the door for a basic application. We're on the low end of that.
So it'll be a proposal of what you'd like to see.
Not at this point. I just kind of wanted to bring it to the board, get you the information. If you'd like us to come back with a recommendation, we'd be glad to come back with a proposal.
I'd love to see a recommendation.
I just want to make sure the board wanted to, you know, entertain us and to take a look at it.
Yeah. I think it's a good idea to have PRC review this, as Paula mentioned, also the engineering aspect. So, yeah, I would be in support of that.
Okay. So, thanks again, Mark, for pulling this together. I think what it does identify is that there is some opportunity for us to take a look at this. And I think what would be good, you know, based on the talent that we have around the table for PRC, to have that recommendation, not only for this, but as Paula said, the engineering fee piece. And we would, you know, look to do that. I know we're getting kind of short on time, you know, for year-end. I believe you have at least one more PRC meeting, and I don't know what your schedule looks like, but certainly, I would think the board, not speaking for the board, but I would say the board, because this is an opportunity for some additional revenue coming in, I would think that the board would welcome those comments as soon as you have them, and look to implement as soon as we could, you know, if we can't do it for the organizational meeting, very early into 2015.
I think that, given all the effort that's been put in so far, to take the additional step that, you know, you mentioned, application packets here, is there anything else that has stood out in any other municipality's application packet, even beyond fee structures?
Good point.
That would be an improvement or something that you would recommend that we implement, that we may not have at this point?
Yeah. I mean, that's... Other part of our goals for the year was to get more of our stuff online. You know, we deal with applicants and then basically send them a packet individually each time. We're working, you know, as we update our website to get more stuff online, have it available, you know, on there. And, you know, engineering firms, we do update our, you know, our fees, our annual checklist and everything else, but to get more of that stuff out there and make it more user-friendly for engineers or developers, they can, you know, grab their packets. The sketch plane here, I download this and has all the stuff they need right off the bat. If they need more information, obviously, staff is always available to answer questions.
Good. Good. All right. As soon as you're ready, you know, push us a recommendation, Mark. And then, I think that, you know, because this is the last work session of 2014, but certainly, the sooner you push it to the board, we can take a look at it. And maybe the goal might be that if we review it at the work session on the 14th of January, that we could look to implement recommendations as early as the 21st of January via resolution.
Okay. Yeah, we'll work something up and we'll review with PRC next week and get back to you more.
Good. All right. Pretty good with that?
Yeah.
All right. Thanks again, Mark, for that effort, you and your team, and being proactive about that. All right, Mr. Costello, Ashland Rise.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring to your attention the fact that I have received a petition from the property owners. I believe every family signed except one family for the creation of a special improvement district to address drainage, the sign, whatever other amenities they deem appropriate for the Ashland Rise subdivision. So, I would like to put a resolution in for the 17th, setting a public hearing for the second legislative meeting in January, holding a public hearing for that, letting them come to address whatever concerns they may or may not have. There is one family that is concerned about it, so they may come to that meeting and express that concern. So, other than that, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
So, to recap for that, it's the sign?
It's the sign. It's a drainage pond. There was at one time a grass circle in the middle of a cul-de-sac, but I believe that's been taken out now as per town specs, and that's no longer an issue.
So it's just really the pond and the sign?
It really is, yeah.
Okay.
Jim, when you say one family, one family out of many? How many? We're talking seven, 30?
Was it 37?
Thirty...
37 families.
Are they all built?
Thirty-three?
Thirty... Yeah, 16, 17.
Seventeen going one way in the district and 16 going the other way.
One out of 33.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. That brings us to the end of the agenda. Any items that we need to get on the table for the best operation for the town? Okay, seeing none, and there be no further business, we'll adjourn the meeting at 9:00 PM. Thank you, staff, as always. Thank you, Lisa, for the support. And I would just say to the board, I have just one legal item and one personnel item for us for an executive session, and we'll get you out into the wonderful snow.